I call this special session of the Upsher County Commission Order. We will begin at a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all. Good morning, or I should say good afternoon to this special meeting of the Upsher County Commission. It's abbreviated maybe, and you can see that commissioners are taking advantage of that opportunity not to wear suit and tie, but we do on regular meetings. We have an agenda today which we will follow, and first things first, we'll have Jeffy read the minutes from the July 30 regular meeting and also from the July 30 joint meeting of Upsher County Commission and the Buchanan City Council. Thank you, Jeffy.
I almost said good morning too, but good afternoon. The County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, July 30, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Jerry Cutright called meeting to order, President Works Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Cottright, Commissioner Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Jackland Nick Locker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously and those otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of July 23, 2015, as submitted. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the reappointment of Louis Simmons to the James W. Curran Library and Park Advisory Board. Mr. Simmons' term will expire on December 31, 2017. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the appointment of Donna Kaper, S. Member of the Upsher County Civil Service Board, to fill in unexpired four-year vacancy. Ms. Kaper's term will expire on June 30, 2017. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the appointment of Jennifer Bennett to fill in unexpired vacancy on the Buchanan Upsher Parks Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Bennett's term will expire June 30, 2016. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved resignation of Christine Foster, S. Full-Time E-911 Communications Center Telecommunicator, effective July 31, 2015. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the retirement slash resignation of Kay Holland as Legal Assistant in the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, effective August 22, 2015. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of full-time legal assistant for the Office of the Upsher County Prosecuting Attorney. Applications must be received by closing business on August 17, 2015. Terry Cutright reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, Louis Upsher Animal Control Facility adoption slash financial transactions from June 1, 2015 through June 3, 2015. Two, Federal Emergency, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Office of Energy Projects. Project update for the Supply Header Project in Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project, June 2015. Three, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Notice of Intent to Prepare and Prepare an Environmental Assessment for the Plant WV Express Project, Request for Comments on Environmental Issues, and Notice of Public Scoping Meeting. Four, Agendas and/or Notice of Meetings As Listened. Five, Meeting Minutes As Listened. Six, Meetings As Listened. Seven, Appointments Needed or Upcoming As Listened. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following elements as listed. The Commission approved the following exemptions and/or refunds as listed. After discussion, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized Commissioner Terry Cutright to sign the request for revision to approved budget to be sent to the Office of the State Auditor for approval. With no further business, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 10:00 a.m. And the minutes of the joint meeting of the Upsher County Commission and the Buchanan City Council, June 30, 2015. The County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, and the Buchanan City Council held a joint meeting at the Upsher County Courthouse Annex on Thursday, July 30, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. There were present Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner, City Council members, Mayor Rick Edwards, Pamka Perry, Mary Alba, Robin Rix Simons, and David Thomas, and City Administrator Mike Doss, County Administrator Terry Wallace, Assistant County Administrator Tabitha Perry, and Jackland Nick Locker, Secretary. Mayor Edwards and Terry Cutright called meeting to order. Meeting began at a moment of silent meditation, prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Edwards provided review of a proposal for the city and county to jointly hire a full-time grant writer with expenses being split evenly between the two entities. The position would be paid by the City of Buchanan with reimbursement by the county. Office space would be provided in both city and county facilities. Commissioners and city council members all agreed that the collaboration would benefit both city and county and would be a win-win situation for all. However, questioned whether using a grant-writing company or a freelance writer would be the best choice. Other concerns included how the split time between city and county and job description development. Terry Wallace advised that after reviewing the draft of the contract with prosecuting attorney David Godwin, that she will coordinate with Michael Doss to make a couple of revisions. Mayor Edwards asked for and was given a consensus to move forward with the project. Mike Doss, City Administrator, advised that the earliest time for implementation of the collaboration would be January as the best-case scenario. Audience feedback complimented both City Council and County Commission members for their willingness to work together. City of Buchanan Administrator Mike Doss provided a review of the proposal for the recreational aquatic sports complex and stated that most residents recognize the need for such a facility. Previously, Buchanan Upsher High School students had introduced these sports complex projects at the April 30, 2015, joint meeting of the BCC and UCC. The proposed complex features lighted sports courts slash fields for basketball, football, baseball, soccer, tennis, an Olympic-sized pool, picnic shelters, concessions, indoor and outdoor track, a walking trail, a facility for classrooms for child and adult education, aerobics, fitness, training, and adequate parking. Mr. Doss estimated that the facility would have a $12 million construction price tag for the real estate costing $800,000 to $1 million, and yearly maintenance at around $454,000. Mr. Doss acknowledged that the funding for the project would probably require a levy of $10 million, with additional required funding coming from grants, national associations, and private funding. Although commissioners and council members liked the idea of the sports complex, most were skeptical that the community would pass such a levy, and also thought that finding suitable acreage would be difficult. Some residents expressed concerns about how a new facility might affect existing facilities and programs such as Stocker Youth Facility and Programs, the Wellness Complex, and Buchanan Upsher Pool Facility, and expressed that it may be better to put money into the bettering of what we already have. One council member commented the project might be overkill. This is too much for us. Another commented that we can pay now or pay later, and asked, can we afford not to do this? Other residents suggested that it would be a long process and require a need for public education forums such as town hall meetings. Most commenters recognized the need slash desirability for the project and cited the benefits that the complex would generate for Buchanan Upsher County. Mayor Edwards, City Council Members, and Commissioners acknowledged positive attitudes and commended everyone for moving in the right direction, working together, and recognized that it has to start somewhere. At 8:40 p.m., with no further business, Mayor Edwards joined the meeting of Buchanan City Council. With no further business, our motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the meeting of the Upsher County Commission was adjourned.
Thank you, Jeffy. Are there any corrections or additions to the July 30, 2015 Upsher County Commission meeting, or the joint meeting of the Upsher County Commission and the Buchanan City Council held on July 30, 2015? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes of both those meetings.
No move.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have no appointments for this afternoon, so it will move down to the items for discussion, action, or approval. First, we have approval for a request for proposal and advertisement for a request for bids for police vehicles. There will be two SUVs and one sedan. All sealed bids must be received until later than 9:00 a.m. on August 27, 2015. Sealed bids will be opened, reviewed, and read aloud by the Upsher County Commission at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, August 27, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that request for proposal?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Charles McKinnick, Assistant Chief Inspector, Chief Inspector Division of the West Virginia State Auditor's Office, regarding services to be provided to the Upsher County Commission for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. It requires an approval and signature of the terms of the engagement as described in the letter, which is basically an audit of the Upsher County Commission finances, which we've had constantly in the past. It's a yearly routine. Is there a motion to approve the signature of the President to be affixed to the request of the forms involving that? Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Kyle Lynn McGee, Justice Program Specialist, Division of Justice and Community Services, regarding recent West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Award. Review and signature of grant contract agreement between the Division of Justice Community Services and the Upsher County Commission, standard and special terms and conditions, and resolution and certification forms. Is there a motion to authorize the President of the Commission to execute such an agreement between the Division of Justice Community Services and Upsher County relative to that community grant?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a request for approval and signature of March 12, 2015, Facility Use Agreement for the Wellness Complex between the Commission and the Upsher County Youth Baseball Association for $1 per year for the next 10 years. Is there a motion to approve that signature as well?
You all know that this was signed previously in March. However, all of the signatures of the baseball association must be notarized. The President was the only one to sign the second time. That's why we're requiring another signature so we can actually file this one on record.
Okay, no problem. Is there a move? A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Magistrate Anita Adams, requesting a parking space that will be available upon the retirement of Kaye Al Holland, effective August 22, 2015. You have a chance to review her request, which was on page 22. That parking space, I believe, was located adjacent to the annex to the Courthouse Annex in what I would describe as the alleyway between the bank building and the courthouse. Is there a approval of that request? Is there a motion to approve that request? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have correspondence from Steve Ling, E-911 Director, requesting the employment of Jerica A. Phillips as a full-time telecommunicator at the wage rate of $11 per hour, effective August 10, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that employment?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but did not Steve indicate to us previously that he now has a full staff at the...
That changed later after.
That changed later, so he now still has a vacancy. Okay, very good. It's a very difficult job. It's not an easy job, maybe, in E-911 dispatching. A lot of pressure, shift work, and whatnot that goes with that. Next, we have correspondence from Heather D. Park, Fire Feed Clerk, announcing a resignation effective August 7, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept that resignation? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from David H. Kaufman, Sheriff, Upsher County, requesting approval of employment of Heather D. Park as Chief Tax Deputy at the wage rate of $19.25 per hour, effective August 10, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that hiring?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Following, we have correspondence from Evelyn Thomas, Community Corrections Program Director, requesting the employment of Amy Knight as Lewis County Case Manager, contingent upon the Board's approval. Ms. Knight's rate of pay would be $11.25 per hour, effective August 10, 2015. Now, if I understand this correctly, we would approve her appointment, but then the Board of the Community Corrections also asked to approve her. Have they already done that?
Yes, it was last evening.
Okay, they did that last evening, very good. Is there a motion to approve the hiring of Amy Knight as Lewis County Case Manager?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Continuing, we have correspondence from J. 33, Library and Park Advisory Board, requesting the termination of Judith Fitzgerald, Assistant Library, effective immediately. This may lead to a matter of executive session if believed necessary. Is there anyone who wishes to remove this into executive session, President? If not, I would ask the question, ask for a motion to approve that request.
I would like to add one thing. It will be effective tomorrow, August 7, of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have correspondence from Josh Marsh, Upsher County, excuse me, Upsher Buchanan Health Department Administrator, providing two nominees for consideration to serve as a member of the Buchanan Upsher Board of Health for a five-year term, effective July 1, 2015. Term is set to expire June 30, 2020. There is currently one vacancy to fill. Mr. Marsh's letter dated July 29 advises that the two candidates under consideration for that one appointment are Teresa Keye and Deborah Osborn, Orsborn, excuse me, Deborah Orsborn. Is there a recommendation or a nomination by one of the, by anyone on the Commission as to whom the appointment should be? Mr. Hawkins, Dale Hawkins resignation from the Board created the vacancy, and under the existing rules and regulations, because of his political affiliation as a Democrat, the current health board consists of two Democrats and two Republicans. The bylaws allow for the vacant position to be filled by either political affiliation.
I'd like to nominate Teresa Keye.
Okay, Keye, K-E-E. Okay, Teresa Keye. Is there a second to that?
I'll certainly second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So Teresa Keye would be the nominee that the Board, or the Commission, excuse me, approved. Next item, we have correspondence from Bob Waggie, requesting to be reappointed to serve on the Upsher County Farmland Protection Board for another four-year term, effective July 1, 2015. Mr. Waggie's new term would expire June 30, 2019. For clarification, that would be Bob Waggie Senior. There is Robert Waggie or Bob Waggie Junior who has business with the county relative to our water purification or something like that. So is there a motion to approve Mr. Waggie as being reappointed to the Upsher County Farmland Protection Board?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have correspondence from Rex Reader, requesting to be reappointed to serve as well on that same farmland preservation board, protection board, for another four-year term, effective July 1, 2015. New term again would expire June 30, 2019. Do I have a motion for Mr. Reader?
No move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Karen J. Harris, requesting the Commission to make it mandatory for the supervisor of the Louis Upsher, excuse me, Animal Control Facility to maintain a Facebook page for that facility. That request came in the form of a two-page letter addressed to the Chair of Commissioners. I will leave it to Jan Conklin as well. Did you receive the copy?
No.
You did not. Maybe we can let you have a chance to read it, and I'll go on to the next item for information. We have a holding down of dance that I'm pending. No chance for Jan to read that. We have correspondence from Nesco Incorporated, providing notice that Nesco Incorporated will be conducting blasting activities in accordance with all state and federal laws, as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, commencing August 21st and continuing through August 2016. So that's for, they said it would be about a year, and that will be number 30, and I'll just clarify that information for the public. For a quarry permit situated in the District of Upsher County approximately 2.3 miles northeast of Adrian, that's the nearest post office, West Virginia, will be conducting activities in accordance with all state and federal laws, as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. Blasting activities will occur Monday through Saturday, from sunrise to sunset. No blasting will be conducted on Sunday, and according to blasting will commence on August 21, 2015, through August 20, 2016. It goes on with the safety regulations that 10 minutes prior to blast, procedures will be used, actions, unauthorized entry, warning signal will be paid, everything else. So that's for information. We have building permits for July 2015. We have agendas, we have meeting minutes, we have meetings listed that, and in the Board, that the Board members or the Commission members will attend. Appointments needed for upcoming vacancies. And the next regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission will commence on August 13, 15, at 9:00, regular meeting time. It's a week from today. Jan, you have a chance to read it. Oh, did not, okay. Okay, then, going back to item number nine, correspondence from Evelyn Thomas, requesting Amy Knight to be appointed Louis County Case Manager for the Community Corrections Program. Is there a motion to approve her hiring?
No move.
Is there a second to it?
No, we didn't second it.
They did, but, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So would you like to address the Commission on your thoughts on this request?
Up here.
Certainly. You are Jan Conklin, who is Director of the Louis Upsher Animal Control Facility.
All right, it came, it took me a long time to even start a Facebook page, and I wasn't sure if it was something that I wanted to do because of drama and different issues.
We've had some issues in the past, relatively.
Yes, we've had different issues in the past. So finally, I decided, let's give it a try. And after doing so, we've had different issues. I've been robbed by people getting the adopting animals. I've had issues with other people that have seen that they adopted. We've also had issues with people stalking some of our rescues that rescue our animals. There have been complaints from either owner, new owners, adopters, or rescuers. And then, there's some controversy recently on the page. I decided to shut the page down. You have never required me to do it. It was a choice that I made and a choice that I took down, take the side down. I called Tabitha that morning, and I told her that the page was coming down, and I just wanted to make them aware. And then you guys got this look. So I hope that you support me and not make me start to speak back up. But if you do, my question is, are you going to make every division in this county start a Facebook page? Because why should I if no one else has to? Also, most rescues have my personal cell phone number. All rescues have my email address, and all rescues have our website. Our website is the most current of information for the animals out there. If they don't have my cell phone number, they have Periscope that works there, so they can get ahold of us 24/7. We had, some people complained that the site wasn't, like, if Facebook was not kept up at night, like, if they asked a question, we'd get back to them till morning. They thought we should answer it right then and there. If I'm home and I wasn't doing anything, I don't care to get on the Facebook page. I had a button, I pushed it, went on, I answered questions. I looked at the private messages that came in, where people would say they had an animal lost or anything like that. They're probably took care of, but not always. You know, if I've got things on my family, I'm not going to get on the Facebook page. So they should understand that we are at the pound at 7:00 in the morning until 2:30 in the afternoon. After that, it's, you know, we might not answer your question until the next day. But I know my drama. I can't stand drama. And this Facebook has a lot of drama. And I'm trying to get that out of my life.
Jan, couldn't you use your webpage to show the pets that are up for adoption?
Our webpage has all animals that are available in the shelter.
I think that would do all the...
And we have two groups, Love for Animals and Call for Whiskers. Both prosecuted our animals, plus Mighty Muts Over Village, who prosecuted our animals. So our animals are still on Facebook. They're just not on a Facebook page that belongs to the shelter.
So basically, Facebook is redundant to what you already established on the webpage.
Right. Yes, it's exactly, hey, our information?
Just transfers it over there.
It transfers it over.
But it doesn't have the drama.
Doesn't have the drama. Because if they want to address us, they have to send an email. It's private. It's not one person putting something there, and then someone comments, and then someone else comments, and then that person keeps commenting, or just the constant drama. So that's how they get all their information. It's from our page. They take our information, they paste it onto their pages.
And I take it, then, as supervisor of that facility, your recommendation is that we, that your decision to remove the facility from Facebook
Right.
is the proper one, and therefore you request that we not compel you to open up Facebook.
Yes, and I have spoke to Agnes Queen, and I've also talked to Cindy from Louis County, and they both know that I have shut the page and why I shut it, and I have their support.
Compared with your...
Yes.
Agnes Queen is President of the Commission of Louis County.
I just spoke to her today, because I had sent a call on her and had talked to her. We've been missing each other, and today, probably about 1:30, I got to speak to her.
And Cindy, as Cindy Wetzold does, they know she's there.
Yes.
At this point, I'm not prepared to make that amendment.
Well, we have a motion, and whether someone will make a motion, I'll make a statement that you can either follow through or not follow through. Is there a motion to make mandatory a Facebook page for the Louis Upsher Animal Control Facility? Is there a motion to make that mandatory? Do I hear a motion? Therefore, no motion that issue dies.
Thank you, guys.
I think that's the proper way to handle it. So thank you, Jan, appreciate it. We know your efforts. We know your love of animals and your concern of animals.
It's not my fault.
And you are the supervisor. We have, you know, and we support our supervisors. We can have any other, there's no other department. We don't require Facebook.
You can do the same thing with the webpage.
Yes, and we do. And we're constantly in contact with our rescues. And we're constantly in contact with our rescues.
Right.
And we're either sending emails out, or sending texts out or something, saying, hey, we're full, we need help, this little dog, can you help in any way?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jan.
But it should die from my, my motion. Okay, continuing, I don't think there is anything else other than paying some bills if we have another discussion or debate. We have such a...
Yes.
Pay some bills.